Good evening. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll. Please to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maple.
Here.
Councilmember Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Would, the Girl Scouts, troop number what?
Twelve ninety.
Twelve ninety, please lead us in the land acknowledgement along with Councilmember Kaplan and the pledge of allegiance. Okay?
Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisi Non people, the Southern Mardu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwin-Winton peoples, and the people of the Wilton Ranchera, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please remain standing. I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
A special thank you, a special thank you to troop two ninety.
Twelve ninety.
Twelve ninety, Councilmember Kaplan and Councilmember's daughter, Asha. Viva's right there, that's Viva.
Hello.
Hi, Viva.
Hi. Okay. Thank you for this opportunity, and it's also Girl Scout cookie season, so please remember to support your local Girl Scouts.
That's right.
Yep, okay. And we have a box for you.
Oh my, oh my. Thank you, Viva. Thank you so much.
And again, for the next twenty days in front of stores, you can support Girl Scouts because the money goes to troop activities to empower girls.
I urge all Sacramentoans to buy as many Girl Scout cookie boxes as you can and will, okay?
Thank you.
That is a wonderful way to start our meeting. We begin tonight with a very special presentation. And how would we like to begin this presentation? I guess I will start by saying that today we recognize Black History Month here in Sacramento. And I know that all month, there have been a series of really important community celebrations, commemorations, that have highlighted the history of our African-American community here in Sacramento, the incredible strength, the incredible amount of civic engagement, the incredible amount of business and governmental leadership, and also recounted, because it's important, the struggles and the continuing challenges that our wonderful community still has because of historic injustices. And so I want to turn this over to Councilmember Jennings, because not only is he the only African-American member of our city council, but this is a true community champion and someone we all love, and who just represents the best of community. So I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to just kind of open the agenda item today to recognize Black History Month and give a little history lesson along the way. But this will be a resolution that will be presented by the entire council. We all understand the importance of Black History and recognizing Black History Month that should be twelve months a year, but we are glad to have February as a month that we can recognize it. And so my comments are, Black History Month is an annual observation originating in the United States, and it was originally known in the very beginning as Negro History Week. Carter G. Woodson, historian, journalist, and father of Black History, launched the celebration of Negro History Week in February of 1926. The week-long celebration turned into a month-long celebration in 1970, first being celebrated at Kent State University. By 1976, Black History Month was being celebrated across the country and in educational institutions, centers of Black culture, and community centers, as well as schools. This year, the community members of the city of Sacramento showed up and showed out to honor the achievements of African-Americans. To date, and we're still counting the numbers, you got to wait to the very end, but the numbers to date that we've compiled, forty Black historical events put up by thirty-seven organizations during twenty-nine days of February, and we know the number is somewhere around five to ten thousand. We're still counting. So that deserves a round of applause. Some of the organizations that organized these events, these festivities, are here with us today on the city council, and we will present them with a resolution before they leave to honor their work, to thank them, and to memorialize this special month and this special occasion. And so with that, team, are we ready?
Yes.
All right, let's go.
I'll kick it off. Whereas Black History Month is a time dedicated to celebrating the achievements, contributions, and resilience of African-Americans throughout history.
Whereas Black History Month provides an opportunity for all individuals to reflect on the significant impact African-Americans have made in shaping the cultural, social, political, and economic landscape of our nation and local economy, and?
Whereas Black History Month serves as a reminder of the struggles and injustices faced by African-Americans in their pursuit of equality and justice, and the ongoing work needed to address systemic racism and promote inclusivity and diversity, and?
Whereas, the city of Sacramento would like to thank the following community-based organizations and all of those who led, who had Black History events this month for encouraging and facilitating education and awareness about the diverse experiences and rich heritage of African-Americans, fostering understanding, empathy, and unity among people of all backgrounds in our local community, and?
Whereas Sacramento State President, Dr. Luke Wood, launched the Black Honors College, underground books, Let's Read Oak Park, Black Authors Talk, Celebrate Arts, St. Hope, For Colored Girls Who Considered Suicide When Rainbow Is An Oof in the Guild Theater, the Celebration of Arts Through Youth and Adult Performance at the Crocker Museum, the University of Pacific African-American Lecture and Guest Speakers, including Dusty Baker, The Space Race, Dr. Seon Proctor, Brandon Lee, Crocker Art Museum, Black History Month Festival, Black Artisan Exhibits, Sacramento Kings and SMUD, the National Anthem by our own Ruth Bolton Holyfield in highlighting Black-owned businesses, fraternities, sororities, performers, and exhibits from historically Black colleges and universities, from Robla High School School District, Black History Month Parent Dinner, LGBT Senator Gumbo-Griots, Greater Sacramento Urban League, and Cut to the Chase, and?
And whereas, St. Hope Public Schools, St. Hope, a Moment in History Photo Project, Paint and Play, Black Film Festival, Black Chef Demonstration, Art Gallery, Black Business Fair and Pop-Up, Reading by Black Authors and Community Leaders, Black History Month Expo Sixtieth Anniversary Celebration of the 1964 Civil Rights Act, from African-American Employees Leadership Council, to the Food for the Soul Luncheon, Jack and Jill, to children and youth reading, Robertson Family Development Center, Soul Line Dancing, Black History Dinner with Robla School District with Councilmember Rick Jennings, the African-American Marketplace in D-5 in South Sacramento, California Cultural and Historical Endowment, to the Sojourner Truth Heritage Museum, also in D-5 in South Sacramento, Five K Walk in Medivu, Food Exhibit Activities Sacramento Juneteenth, Black History Month Art Reception, the Center at Sierra Health Foundation, Black Child Legacy Campaign, Faith Made Flesh Book Talk and Celebration, Wiley Manual Book Drive, and Black Achievers Creating Change, Our Vote, Our Voice, a Program of the Sacramento Chapter of the Links Incorporated, period.
Why didn't I get that part? Now, therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Sacramento that we do hereby recognize the month of February as Black History Month in the city of Sacramento, and honor and recognize the various community-based organizations throughout the city and region for their efforts in educating thousands of people on the rich history and contribution of African-Americans to the cultural fabric of our city and our nation, signed unanimously by the mayor and every member of the city council.
We have a resolution for each one of the organizations that participated. The thirty-seven organizations for the forty events for the twenty-nine days in the month of February, we have a resolution for each organization that you can leave here with tonight. And if you would like it in a different format than the format we've given you, then please just let me know. But we just want to thank you for all that you've done to promote Black History and the education that goes along with it here in the city of Sacramento. Another round of applause, if you will, please. Do you want to take a picture? So if I could get everyone to come to the front that was participating with the Black History throughout the month of February, if you'd come to the front, we want to get a group picture.
Come on.
I'm gonna go down there.
Vice President Saddle Stidwell, I think we see you over there. VP of Student Affairs, come on now.
Yeah, told you to go down there. We'll be up there.
I got the young girl in the side.
I got the young girl in the side.
One, two, three.
Hold on, don't move. Don't breathe, don't blink.
Hey, we're good.
Hi. I'll be in a Friday.
Huh? Uh, yeah, I think they got him down here. Rick, I mean, Dennis, Dennis.
I know. Yep. We are not done. We are not done with this presentation.
Yes, we are not done yet.
We are not done. We are not done.
We got, we got one more.
Mr. Jennings.
Hooch.
It is, yeah. Mr. Jennings, we are not done, and we're going to turn this over to Vice Mayor Maple.
All right. If we could, if we could have order. Thank you so much, everyone. Well, I must say, we've been a little bit sneaky the last few weeks, and me and some of my colleagues got together and thought to ourselves, how are we going to honor Black History Month in the city of Sacramento? And so over, over the last few weeks, I've had the honor of working with Mayor Steinberg and Mayor Protem Talamontes to research and prepare our own resolution for someone with us here tonight who represents Black excellence and a legacy of service and achievement. Councilmember Jennings. I had to hide this under my desk. Tonight, we are honoring you, Councilmember Jennings, and I would like to welcome his friends and family who are in the chamber tonight. Can we get a round of applause? I'm gonna say a few words. If I, if I may, if I may. Recognizing Black History Month also means recognizing the individuals who are making Black History every single day. In the three decades that you've served our community, as a school board member, as the CEO of, for the Center of Fathers and, for Fathers and Family, as District Seven's representative, you have worked hard to support and uplift others and deliver for your district for that. We are grateful. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Jennings, we got you. It's really hard to keep a secret up here. So when we made it to 5:30 today and we realized that he still didn't know he was getting a resolution, we felt incredibly successful with our own ability to keep it a secret from him. I'm going to share a little story and then just say a few statements that I had prepared. But over the summer, our parks commissioners wanted to host a wrestling event in the community, Natomas Mania, Natomas Wrestle Palooza. And I wanted, I needed to choose a council member to wrestle with, and I thought, no one better than former football Raider star championship, Mr. Jennings. So I, I asked him, I was like, hey, can we do this event? Like, you and I would technically be wrestling, but not us, because I'd have to win, but we'd have, you know, we'd be coaches to these wrestlers. And he just said, yes, count me in. So he called me Natomas Barbie. And his name for the wrestling event was Pretty Slick Rick Jennings.
I got church people here in all this.
And we did a whole skit. He was such a great actor, incredible actor. And when we got off the wrestling, like, actual match, every single kid at the South Natomas Community Center wanted to take a photo with him. They were so excited that he's a pro, like, just football player, and so excited with his humor, and seeing you just be a mentor out in my community and having you steal that spotlight was an honor for me. And I know you've just been an inspiration to so many in the district and across the city of Sacramento, and it's an honor to help present this resolution to you tonight, a deserving champion who highlights, uplifts, and empowers the African-American community, and not just African-American community, all of us, and really just making it about teamwork. Congratulations.
You know, I, I guess you look up the word, the phrase decency in politics, you'll find the picture of Rick Jennings. You know, really, I mean, and it, and it's obviously more rare than it should be. But, you know, Rick, your colleagues want to honor you because, as I said earlier, we all love you. You're a peacemaker, you're always a gentle person, you're always willing to see the best in other people, and, and that, that creates a lot of, a lot of affection and respect for you, not only among your colleagues on the city council, but in a very grateful community, because you are a role model. And, you know, you're also humble, so you don't necessarily see that all the time in yourself, but we all do, and so does your community. That's why it's so great to honor you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I accept this, I accept this humbly on behalf of all of my colleagues who are honoring me tonight, and all of my colleagues who are out there who are honoring me tonight as well. This wasn't supposed to be about me. It was supposed to be about the work that was being done in our community, and so I guess I'm a part of that now. And I thank you with all my heart and soul. I love each and every one of you, and I'm committed to the end. We still got work to do, all right? As long as I got each one of you on my team, there is no stopping us now. So thank you so much.
The rule is everyone who is here tonight has to stay for the entire city council. Thank you, and really, you're all welcome to stay, but thank you all so much for coming. Appreciate it. Take a pic, come on. Let's go one more pic.
Oh, yeah, we should take a photo with.
All right, everyone. Unfortunately, now we need to get to the business of the council, but that was a great, great start. Thank you, Vice Mayor Maple, Mayor Protem Talamontes, for putting that together. It's wonderful. Let's move now to the consent calendar. We do have twenty-one items. Are there items that members would like to discuss separately or vote on separately?
Mayor, item number seven, I have questions.
Okay.
Mayor, item number sixteen, comment, and I'll vote differently.
And you will vote differently. Okay, very good.
I have a comment.
Comment on sixteen as well, okay? All right, thank you. Nobody else, I see. Do we have public testimony in the consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I have one speaker, Mac Worthy, on item sixteen.
Well, it's a fake nationality, though. Those are Negroes, those aren't African-Americans, that's like I am, those are Negroes. But anyway, we look here at another housing project. People, ain't you tired of lying to the people? When do you get enough of lying to the people on another project? You went on this morning about housing. Nobody said, people of the neighborhood, parlay your equity and build your own damn housing. No city in America ever been built by us, government, nor a union. So why do you got these people thinking they're going to get something? Because you want your hand in it. And you'll vote for that because you don't know what you're doing. You run in your mouth, but when it get down to the nuts and votes, you don't know what the hell you're doing. You don't know what you're doing. Over there on Thirty-Seventh and Second Avenue, look at that for training. That was a disgrace. City paid $360,000 when Lola Hamilton was over there, just closed that store. Nobody raised that. The two million dollar piece of property at the, behind Cal Expo, SHRA marred it. Why didn't you tell the people when, Gata, when you, you let Jason Air change the line before you come on? Talk to the people. You can't keep lying because they're going to show up. When the candy store closed, you better look out. You better look out who's coming. Just say it.
Yes, on item seven. So question for the city manager, you know, I, first of all, I know we're still dealing with shortages in our urban forestry, and it's led to, obviously, a stressful time for the crew that we do have, but I've got some concerns, and I worry about how we're trying to attempt to get to where we need to on those demands, particularly given the fact that we had a lot of, a lot of work this time around. And I understand, you know, our recent contract helps us move in that step, but maybe I'd like to see, you know, at least a response from staff on how this helps us move forward in addressing the gap, or if this is only perpetuating that potential gap, so.
Councilman McGarrett, so this has been an item that we've had lots of conversation with one-on-one as part of this council, and following the adoption of the Local Thirty-Nine Budget, or, or the contract, rather, it helped us adjust the wages upwards to be more competitive with trying to fill these positions. This unfortunately is work that we need to get done, given the recent storms, and this, as you note in the staff report, it's a one-time request, where this, and then coupled with our class and comp. request, and then coupled with our class and comp study that's going on. We're hoping that with the recent contract adoption and then layering on the class and comp, we're gonna be more competitive so we can fill these vacancies. But for now, this is just gonna get us through the backlog.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. City Manager. I think the concerns that I do have is the fact that we want to make sure we're as healthy as we can in our own department to meet the baseload need. And as you know, when we need a surge, then that's when the contracting comes in, because it does come at a higher price. But I appreciate the response there, and again, I guess those are my concern, and thank you for your staff responding about where we are on the class and comp and when that's gonna get back to our bargaining. That's it, Mr. City Manager, and I will comment on 16 after my colleagues.
Okay.
But, and I'll go ahead and move the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Moved and seconded, okay. I know Councilmember Kaplan indicated she might have a different vote on 16 minutes here from Councilmember Kaplan, and we can incorporate that into the motion if necessary.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Item 16, I want to make very clear. I'm extremely supportive of the settlement in the AFSMI anti-displacement housing project. My concern on this one item is several of us in the city have had concerns with our motel voucher program and what is going on, specifically with Step Up on Second Street. So, this contract, or this item enters into another contract with Step Up on Second Street. And so, Leslie, I just have a couple questions I want to ask you. And even though they're very two different things, I am very understanding of that.
Yes.
My question comes in with accountability and data, and can we trust the information that they're giving? Because where I'm coming from is when we do a contract, I want to make sure those services are being provided, and I do have some questions and concerns with Step Up on Second Street. So, do we have the information with this contract on who is being assisted?
So, I want to make a bit of a distinction between, because we have an existing contract with Step Up. This will be a new contract. I can answer the question related to our existing contract for the Aggie Square anti-displacement work. And we get monthly reports from Step Up that lists the participants, and then provides us all the backup documentation in terms of canceled checks, where the money went to, you know, if it went to rental assistance, we have copies of all of those checks as part of their normal and monthly report to us, which gets submitted as part of their invoice package to us. In addition, Step Up on Second also reports into the HMIS system, so we have a tracking for those participants in that way. And so, we feel very comfortable that we are really working hard to make the services available to the folks in the Aggie Square community, and Step Up has been a good partner for us in that way.
And that's really where I want to go, is where I may have concerns with something else that they're doing. I'm wanting to make sure a continuation of this contract. Do we actually know?
Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me, we cannot have this. Okay, hold on, everybody, let's just calm down. Everyone can be heard here, okay? Let's just, everyone needs to, I think we need to minimize conversation in the chamber, in the chamber, please. This is ours, respected city treasure. But let's just, everyone, keep, let's keep calm and let's move on. Go ahead, Leslie, please.
I think Councilmember Kaplan had another question for me, so I'll.
Order, point of order.
Gonna tell me that?
Point of order, point of order.
So, I'd like to remind members of the audience, please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak out from the audience. You're in violation of Chapter 5 of the City Council Rules of Procedure. If you will continue, you will be directed to leave the meeting.
Go ahead, please.
Yes, Ms. Kaplan?
So, my question is, where we get this data? Have we actually called any individuals to make sure that they're actually receiving the services that the invoices and vouchers are coming in for?
Yes, we have, and we have, Step Up actually has kind of an outreach person that works in the Aggie Square and Oak Park area, and we're in regular conversations with them as it relates to the participants, and have spoken with some of the participants in the programs themselves.
And that, you know, I wanted, I think it's very important we ask those questions, because I have questions of the organization elsewhere. So, it could be, this is a really good fit, and the benefit is being provided, but on this one vote, Mayor, I'm going to abstain on the extension because of some of the other work and concerns I have about what they're providing to our unhoused community. And I want to make it abundantly clear, it has nothing to do with the money we are funding. It has everything to do with making sure money as we are letting as a city go to the services, and there is accountability that those services are being had.
Okay, so when the consent calendar is voted upon, Councilmember Kaplan will be reflected as an abstention on item 16.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Let's hear from others, we've got Council-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Leslie.
Who was that?
That was noise from me, sorry. I apologize. But there were two speakers that wanted to speak to item 16 on public, on this matter, that are AFSMI representatives, and if there is that opportunity, they just didn't record the number correctly on their speaker slip. So, if there is that opportunity.
Sure.
I would love to welcome them here.
Yes, please, bring them up.
Councilmember Maple?
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Elrika Aratonang. I'm a mental health worker at UC Davis Medical Center. And I'm here today also to ask for your support for the AFSMI anti-displacement housing partnership between the city and my union, AFSMI 3299. Resources like this are what keep workers like us from not sleeping in our cars. The UC effect on our neighborhood is taking a toll on many of us. Wherever a UC pops up, the cost of living increases by 30%, making it harder and harder for workers like me to live near where we work. We are struggling to keep a roof over our head. This program gives us a glimpse of hope. I'm so glad my union is making housing a priority. We don't need any more UC worker sleeping in cars. We need them in homes. This is a great first step. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Natasha Booker. I am a custodian at UC Davis Medical Center. I'm here today to ask for your support for AFSMI anti-displacement housing partnership between the city and my union, AFSMI 3299. I used to be homeless. My family and I used to sleep in a tent, but then I got a UC job. And because my union, AFSMI 3299, under the leadership of Catherine Leinberger, my family is safe and off the streets. But today, many of my coworkers are being pushed out of their homes and into cars because of the housing crisis. Cooks, custodians, nursing assistants, and struggling. It's my union in the fighting for more affordable housing and is happy to support the funds and partnership with the city of Sacramento. We support the University of Sacramento, but we have to make sure that the UC doesn't make the housing prices worse and force the lowest-paying workers out of their homes and onto the streets. We ask you to support the AFSMI 3299 Gregory McNair anti-displacement housing program, project, so we can get direct financial assistance for the community. This will help keep people like me in our homes and in Sacramento. Thank you.
Alright, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just really want to appreciate the representatives from AFSMI 3299 for being here today and for sharing your story. For those, we were talking about the Community Benefits Agreement ordinance at our 2:00 PM meeting. Here, this program is a direct example and result of that. It is funding, this is one of four programs where the funding from that, from that agreement came forth, and it's having real, again, real tangible results. Almost 300 people have been served just since last year. And that, just to be clear, this is a very location-specific program. It is mostly impacting my district, also Councilmember McGarret's district, and it is literally housing people. So, we have payments for people who are behind on their rent to stay in their homes. So, this anti-displacement work is also helping people come up with a down payment so that they can get into an apartment if they have been displaced. So, it's very, it's a wonderful program. I understand Councilmember Kaplan's concerns about another program that they are a part of, but I do want to be clear that I support this program. It's been a benefit to my district and community, and I'd love to see it move forward, and I'll be supporting it today. Thank you.
Eric, go ahead, Eric.
Okay, go ahead. Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also, you know, wanted to thank our members of Local 3299 for their AFSMI, their work. I also want to recognize the work of, you know, our Mayor Steinberg, who was involved in that in-depth negotiation. I know Councilmember Shanier and I went to the chancellor on a number of these issues and pushing for recognizing the issues that our workers were facing, many of them who live in both of our council districts. I live near the campus, and my son goes to the campus, on the campus there, you know, the Academia de Lenguajes there, the language academy. And this is, again, you know, for those who haven't read the staff report, I mean, this is assistance that goes directly for rental, for utility assistance, for home repair, and assistance to avoid evictions. This is so folks can continue to uplift themselves along with the workforce paths that they have there, so that if someone does start off in an entry-level job, they're looking at moving up forward in that process. So, and because of AFSMI's intervention in this, we were able to support a number of additional housing programs that are making an impact along Stockton Boulevard. So, I wanted to say thank you very much personally to your membership for caring for my neighbors, for our neighbors as well, and proud to have made the motion to move this item on the consent calendar. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just, let me add some thanks to 3299 for seeing labor relations as more than just the terms and conditions of employment, but also the quality of life in the communities which your members live. Because this was really groundbreaking, and this is groundbreaking. $10 million for anti-housing displacement, $5 million, part of this with AFSMI. I will tell you that it is one of the proudest parts of my seven-plus years here, this very thing, and having had the opportunity to help negotiate that. And Leslie Fritsch, she deserves a big thank you, too. Yeah, because she, how many Friday morning meetings, how many, how many meetings? But we got to a beautiful place, and this is really the highlight of it. Thank you.
Can I just ask, like, moving forward, because this is what, like, is difficult for me? I'm fully supportive of the first part, but that any other item that has Step Up on Second contract, that it is disconnected from anything? Because I am fully supportive, I want to make it clear, of the AFSMI and the $5 million, it's just concerns that Step Up on Second is the right thing.
We understand, understand.
If it can just be disconnected on future items that may come to council, so that they have standalone contracts, that would be appreciated.
Let us think about how best to, how best to consider that. Okay, we have the consent calendar with Councilmembers abstention known. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, with the one abstention, the motion passes. Consent calendar passes. We now move to public hearings, and this is a biggie. Item 22, the adoption of the 2040 General Plan and the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Mr. Hurdle, before you begin, I must say something very serious and stern to you, and you have to listen to me very, very carefully. Happy birthday!
Well, good evening and thank you, Mayor and Council. All I wanted for my birthday was to adopt this general plan. And I am Matt Hurdle, the manager of Long Range Planning, and we have arrived at the final step of this five-year journey to comprehensively update the city's general plan and climate action and adaptation plan. This monumental undertaking only occurs once a decade, so I'd like to take a few minutes to provide a recap of our progress, highlight key aspects of these plans, and share the next steps. Updating the general plan is important to ensure it remains relevant in addressing the needs of our community. It could be seen as the North Star of the city. It details how we will accommodate housing and job growth over the next 20 years. It changes city policy and directs staff to implement significant actions. Subsequent actions will need to be consistent under the 2040 General Plan, and it also sets the stage for more detailed plans that will be adopted after the 2040 General Plan, such as the Urban Forest Plan and Sacramento's Parks Plan. The general plan update focused on updating goals and policies to reflect changed conditions and community priorities and to address new state laws. Important cornerstone to the 2040 General Plan include a new land use framework, more attainable housing, more housing near transit, a new environmental justice element, and bold action to address an accelerating climate crisis. In parallel, a new climate action and adaptation plan was prepared to establish Sacramento as the regional leader in climate action. In 2019, City Council adopted a bold vision that in 2040, the city of Sacramento will be a national model of sustainable, equitable growth and community development. After the vision was developed in Phase 1, Phase 2 culminated with a draft land use map and key strategies approved by City Council in 2021. In Phase 3, we worked on developing those ideas into fully formed plans for public review and comment. We are now concluding Phase 4, final adoption, and the main component of this phase has been gathering community input to develop these final plans. Community input has been integral throughout the entire process. In Phase 1, we conducted city workshops, listening sessions, pop-up events, and youth-focused activities. In Phase 2, we conducted citywide and community-plan-area-focused virtual workshops and completed a statistically valid survey. 10 key strategies and a draft land use and mobility map were developed and approved by City Council in 2021. The key strategies addressed housing, corridor revitalization, reduction of greenhouse gases, climate resiliency, environmental justice, and prioritizing people over cars. Robust community engagement continued in Phase 4 to cast a wide net and encourage harder-to-reach residents to provide input. This five-month engagement resulted in about 1,600 individual comments via the self-guided online workshop and over 120 comment letters. As a result, considerable revisions were made to the documents. As a quick refresher, the general plan contains four main sections. Part 1 covers the introduction and a chapter on sustainability and equity. Part 2 is the citywide goals, policies, and actions. Part 3 is community plans and special study areas, and Part 4 contains administration and implementation. Part 2 of the general plan contains eight elements, as shown here. These elements contain goals, policies, and actions to achieve the vision of the general plan. Part 3 of the general plan contains 10 community plans, which supplement citywide policies based on issues unique to each community plan area. Five special study areas are also included in Part 3 of the general plan. These are not new boundaries or designated areas. The five special study areas are being carried over from the 2035 General Plan. Special study areas reflect areas adjacent to existing city limits in which careful coordination between the city and county is required to protect natural resources and efficiently deliver services. In the Natomas area, for example, the city has a responsibility to carry out the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan, and therefore, the city has a vested interest in the future of the Natomas Basin as a whole and continues to designate it as a special study area. I will now spend just a few minutes highlighting some of the key moves of the 2040 General Plan. Throughout the community engagement process, sustainability and equity emerged as the overarching themes. The Sustainability and Equity chapter provides a summary of how these themes are reflected throughout the documents. It also identifies a series of indicators that will be used to monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of the general plan in fostering a sustainable and equitable city. Facilitating infill development and more attainable housing is also one of the key moves of the 2040 General Plan. The topic of housing is primarily covered in the city's eight-year housing element that was adopted by council in 2021. However, the 2040 General Plan supports the housing element, most notably through the land use and placemaking element. The Introduction chapter includes a policy index that lists all the policies and actions for a specific topic. This includes the topic of housing, where you will find 30 related policies and actions. With a move from maximum density standards, or number of units per acre, to maximum floor area ratio, we will allow more flexibility and creativity by focusing on the size of the box. we will allow more flexibility and creativity by focusing on the size of the box rather than the number of housing units within the box. The 2040 General Plan focuses an even greater emphasis on infill development, on commercial corridors and near transit. It focuses on more inclusive neighborhoods and more attainable housing options by allowing and encouraging a variety of housing types. The maximum floor area ratios within a half-mile walking distance of transit has been increased, and there will be no longer a requirement for newer existing development to provide a minimum number of vehicle parking spaces. The maximum floor area ratio map, shown on the diagram on the right, and on the left is the land use map, which has been simplified from 27 land use designations to only 11. The land use maximum intensity standards are controlled via separate maps and work together to facilitate infill development and housing, as well as focusing growth strategically to reduce vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions and support frequent and reliable transit. Another key move is addressing climate change, air quality, and environmental justice. The link between community design and public health has long been established. Poor air quality from cars and trucks emitting exhaust and facilities that emit toxic gases can lead to negative health outcomes. The general plan focuses on clean air, water, and soil with a goal of having no segment of the community disproportionately being burdened by the environmental conditions. It introduces a ban on new or expanded gas stations unless electric-vehicle fast chargers are installed. It expands upon the Transit-Oriented Development Ordinance by not allowing drive-through restaurants within a half-mile walking distance of high-frequency transit and existing light rail stations. It builds off the mayor's Commission on Climate Change, includes a modal hierarchy and user prioritization of walking, biking, public transit, then the car. It prioritizes investments in underserved and environmental justice communities, such as community-led planning, implementation grants, parks, and tree canopy. An overview of the Climate Action Adaptation Plan will be provided in the next few slides. The CAP consists of 10 chapters and seven supporting appendices. Chapter 6 contains community greenhouse gas reduction measures. These measures are data-driven and measurable opportunities for reducing greenhouse gas emissions in specific sectors. They are supported by approximately 240 actions, which are the implementable steps that together will achieve the measures. Chapter 7, Adaptation, draws on climate change vulnerability assessment to identify six adaptation goals that are supported by a large range of policies and actions that can build community resilience and reduce the impacts of climate change effects in Sacramento. The CAP includes five built environment measures to address the 37% of Sacramento's greenhouse gas emissions that come from the building sector. The transportation measures address the 57% of Sacramento's greenhouse gas emissions that come from the transportation sector. Additional measures will reduce GHGs from the waste sector and the water and wastewater sectors. The final measure will support carbon sequestration through the expansion of the urban tree canopy. The CAP also provides policy direction for adaptation to projected climate change impacts. The adaptation priorities are: city government capacity to implement climate adaptive strategies; extreme heat and urban heat island effect; mitigating flooding; air quality impacts of wildfire and heat; preparedness for climate disaster events; and water supply availability and water conservation. This includes the high-level overview of the CAP. So in terms of next steps. On January 25th, the Planning and Design Commission passed a motion recommending council adoption with a revision to policy LUP 412, Drive-Thru Restaurants. This and other minor revisions since the January 25th Planning and Design Commission hearing are described in Attachment 3 of the staff report and are reflected in the Hearing Draft General Plan. Following adoption this evening, the 2040 General Plan and CAP will be effective 30 days later, on March 28th. Staff will then begin implementing the near-term actions as directed by the general plan, and staff will return to council annually to report on progress. In closing, staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, and upon conclusion, 1, adopt a resolution certifying the Master Environmental Impact Report and adopting the mitigation monitoring program for the 2040 General Plan and Climate Action Adaptation Plan; 2, adopt a resolution adopting and implementing the 2040 General Plan and repealing the 2035 General Plan, including revisions and additions shown in Attachment 1 to the supplemental material that was posted earlier today, which includes a correction to policy LUP 412, Drive-Thru Restaurants, allows drive-through restaurants in the pipeline to proceed with the entitlement process, and authorizes the city manager or his designee to correct clerical errors if needed; and 3, adopt a resolution adopting the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Thank you. Myself and the team are available for any questions. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt. I'm sure there will be questions, but we have extensive amount of public testimony here. And I think we want to hear from the public on, really, a fundamental part of our job here, the general plan and the climate adaptation plan. So, let's hear from the public. We have 29 speakers.
Thank you. I'm a mayor, I'm going to read off a few names. Feel free to line up in the middle aisle. Paul Menard, Chris Norum, Kay Crum, Isaac Gonzalez, Dana Schwartz.
Paul Menard. Hi.
Hi, Daryl. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. I'm Paul Menard. I'm here in support of the staff recommendation. I'm speaking for the American Institute of Architects Central Valley Chapter. I am a two-time past president of the chapter and current chair of our Housing Task Force and a member of our civic engagement team. I want to thank the mayor and all the council members for your service. And our, our chapter of the American Institute of Architects has 600 members. We cover 17 counties. Most of our members are here in the six-county region. You've got a letter signed by our president, Cody Carpieno, in your materials tonight. It's a letter of support. And attached to that letter is our chapter's housing position statement. And both the letter and the position statement received unanimous approval from our chapter's board of directors. So, we urge you to adopt the staff recommendation and adopt the 2040 General Plan and the Climate Action Plan, Action and Adaptation Plan. Their adoption will, and implementation will help to achieve the vision that was adopted in 2009. It's already been on the slides. In 2040, the city of Sacramento will be a national model of sustainable, equitable growth and community development. So, and I'm running out of time here. So we are, as architects and stewards of the built environment, we are here to offer our continuing support, and we're happy to meet with any...
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Chris Norum.
Any of you on any of these topics, if you think we can help. Thank you.
Next speaker is Chris Norum, then Kay Crum.
Hi, City Council. Mr. Mayor, Chris Norum, North State BIA. I want to start by just thanking the staff for all the work on this epic program and for all the flexibility that they're building in to, to this, sorry. North State BIA, Building Industry Association, the new residential home construction industry. So, we do appreciate the flexibility that's being built into this plan. The collaboration, especially on water, parking issues, really, really important. You know, I think the biggest change here is that you're looking at some caps on those overall sizes, and, you know, our concern is that we're going to eventually get to a point where you might have to have some, some things moved around in order to make some projects pencil out. So, you know, I would just say, keep that in mind when projects come forward, that we're going to have to contort the industry a little bit to meet what you guys are trying to do here. And we want to, you know, support the idea that's behind this, which is you guys want to see robust growth. We all want to see that happening. So, as the city looks at a variety of its other policy areas, we want to make sure that housing remains feasible. So I would just put that in your ear for future discussions. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Kay Crum, then Isaac Gonzalez.
Good evening, council. So I commented on this under two groups, for Strong Sack Town and also for CCL, and wrote extensive comments. And I want to say, first and foremost, I completely support this. I'm excited to see the general plan and the CAP coming to fruition. And taking a big sigh of relief that this project is coming to a close, finally. It's, I, I'm sure, for the people working on it, it's consumed their lives, but I think for good, good merit. So I know this isn't the end goal that we have, but it is a significant step in the right direction because active transportation and public transit have been set as a priority over personal vehicles. So, thank you for that. I really do appreciate that. And increasing the far within a half-mile of transit, frequent transit, is fantastic. Again, another fabulous step. I want to remind everybody that many of these items are intertwined. Things within this document don't just affect one area, and we have to make up for nearly half a century of neglect in disadvantaged neighborhoods. And one thing that I think just needs to be carefully fleshed out is the measures and making sure that we're seeing results happen and improving as needed, and just making sure that that's implemented deliberately. But I want to say, from the bottom of my heart, Vic and Matt, thank you so much for reaching out, for meeting with the groups, for explaining things, for listening to our comments, and then incorporating it into this draft. And thank you to the city staff for all of your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Isaac Gonzalez, then Dana Schwartz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Isaac Gonzalez. I'm a lifelong resident of our city of Sacramento and a member, president of the Talal Park Neighborhood Association and serve on the Active Transportation Commission. Thanks to Councilmember Garrett, my comments tonight are my own. First off, there's many more people here that are much more intelligent and versed in this than I am, but I will just say that, generally speaking, this is a wonderful day for the city of Sacramento. This general plan really does solicit so many warm feelings in us because of the very progressive and forward-thinking that it has. The charge now for this city council and councils to come is to follow it and to not make obsessions when powerful interests come before this deal asking you for exceptions for their projects because, for one reason or another, it will make sense unless they get an exemption. So, let's stick to these principles. These principles are not just aspirational, they're critical. We face a climate, climate emergency in our city and our world, and this is a big part of the way that we're going to turn the ship around to the right way, if we do at all. And lastly, I just want to say again to Matt and to all of the staff, thank you for spending so many years working diligently with the community to get the outreach out there. This is truly a general plan that's been written by city staff but informed deeply by, by members of the community. This is Sacramento's general plan, so fully supportive of it and hope you adopt it this evening. Thank you.
Your comments. Dana Schwartz, then Lisa Prey.
Hi. So I'm here to talk mainly towards the North Natomas Basin development, that I am very concerned about that. I live at Heritage Park, which is right across the street from that. And there's this beautiful farmland, rice fields with a beautiful flyway. We hear the geese, the snow geese each year. And I am asking you to make sure that that flyway is protected and that the wildlife remains protected. Developing this area will increase the traffic on Elkhorn. It will not be good for the climate. And there's plenty of land in North Natomas, infill land, that has not been developed. And that needs to be developed before we start developing county land and give away the flyways and the wildlife land. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lisa Prey, then James Allison.
Thank you very much. I'm Lisa Prey. I'm the president of the North Natomas Community Coalition. We want to first thank both Matt Hurdle and Garrett Norman for meeting with us to make many adjustments to the initial North Natomas Community Plan. I do want to point out two areas that I feel left, lost a little of the emphasis. The first is every map that, that shows North Natomas has the light rail path to the airport indicated on it with all of the potential stops. We now know that light rail will not come through North Natomas until well after 2039, at the earliest, since that's the proposed date for the completion of the bridge. So, to our point of view, we'd prefer to see an emphasis on getting RT to provide that transportation in a bus mode because, right now, we're in the, in a very ambitious project to create 550 low-income homes in North Natomas. Most of them are already actually constructed. The third project is under construction. What we require, due to our lack of robust public transportation, is that low-income homeowner, renters have to own a car as well and take on those expenses. It's inequitable. They need a way to get to work, to get to the grocery store. And this brings up our second issue. The second issue is that North Natomas is cut in two by I-5. We have people who live on the east side and people who live on the west side, and there is no way to cross that with a pedestrian or bicycle overcrossing. Three of them are mentioned in the transportation planning, plan. All three of them have the very lowest priority. So we need that as well. Thank you very much, and please consider these for further attention.
Thank you for your comments. James Allison, then Evan Edgar.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. My name is James Allison with the Midtown Association, a property business improvement district representing over 1,200 properties in our central city. Our mission is to make Midtown the center for culture, creativity, and vibrancy in Sacramento's urban core. Within that mission is a goal to pursue the development of responsible urban infill projects that can meet the needs of our evolving district. We would like to take this opportunity today to elevate the work that has been done by staff to bring forward this general plan update and the continued commitment to advancing density in our city. This is a culmination of years of work, and the countless hours spent to bring us to this point should be celebrated. The key to enhancing both the vibrancy and economic vitality of our city is in bringing new housing and new residential opportunities, especially in urban core. Through the initiatives and objectives sought within the GPU, the city has affirmed its commitment to sensible housing policy that meets the needs of our evolving city. There is one area of concern for our organization, which is the threshold set for the floor area ratio, or FAR. Specifically, we would like to see the city think even larger about the future around proposed FAR increases and the urban core. The proposed adjustments are consistent with projects that have already been completed in Midtown, which means this new threshold will serve only to limit the heights of future projects instead of opening new opportunities for increasing density in the urban core. The key to bringing in needed housing units online in Sacramento will be through high-density, mixed-use projects that can meet the needs of our residents across all income levels. This GPU is a step in that direction, but we mustn't be afraid to go even further. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Evan Edgar, then Susan Hare.
Mayor and board members, my name is Evan Edgar. I'm a compost lobbyist. I'm in recovery, it's a 12-step program. I've been in recovery for 30 years in Sacramento as a resident, and I here representing, and I'm a lobbyist for Aggrumen and the California Compost Coalition. Aggrumen is currently a long-term provider, I mean, a short-term provider of taking your urban green waste out to the farm for composting, and we want to be your long-term solution as part of the general plan. I support carbon farming and the measure GH01 to promote and increase carbon farming in Sacramento. I got to commend Eric Guerrero as a board member to have you guys put that in your AB13 scoping plan last year, where agriculture is a carbon emitter, and we're flipping it to be a carbon sink, which means we can take your urban green waste, sequestered in the soils, save 40% to 50% water, have higher yields, less erosion, and it's been a way to get carbon credits for the future. We just applied for a Healthy Soils Grants for CDFA in East County for only $100,000, but we got them spread in Yolo County, down in Corto Olive, all throughout Sacramento, where we're doing Healthy Soils Initiative. What your city plan says to increase carbon farming by 43,000 acres by 2030, we can do it, and fulfill the mandate of SB 1383, where you devote 75% of your organics from the landfill. We make urban, make organic compost, take it to the farm, which is great for the green waste, residential green waste. When it comes to commercial food waste, that's anaerobic digestion, that's a different market. Make, make transportation fuel out of that. So I'm here today to support carbon farming. I have a handout here that is, that has a little map of what we're doing with the RCD, the Resource Conservation Districts, and by making organic compost out of your urban green waste is part of the general plan and hopefully part of your long-term plan to support Aggrumen as part of your upcoming RFP for long-term solutions for carbon farming. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Susan Hare, then Robert Burness. I'd like to remind members of the audience, please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of proceedings by continuing to speak out from the audience. You're in violation of Chapter 5 of the City Council Rules of Procedure. If you continue, you'll be directed to leave the meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Susan Hary. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Environmental Council of Sacramento. I'm an architect and urban planner. Ecos is a coalition of 17... Ecos is a coalition of 17 community-based organizations and about 1,000 individuals throughout the Sacramento region. First, Ecos would like to say thank you for the many good changes in the general plan, particularly increasing the allowable building height and density in infill areas at high-capacity transit. A number of speakers tonight will discuss the importance of retaining open space and agriculture in the Natomas Basin to ensure the success of the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan. I would like to ask the council to uphold the planning actions that made it possible for the open space to still exist today in Natomas, and that is the city's agreement to the NBHCP and the County of Sacramento's establishment of the urban service boundary. While the planning actions were taken 30 years ago, the fundamental premises haven't changed, and in fact, climate change, because of climate change, there's even more reason to preserve the open space and habitat. Developments, proposals for the Natomas Basin that are now being studied by the city and the county work against these longstanding planning actions. As these projects come before the city and the county, I would ask you to use your seat at the table by virtue of the city's Natomas Special Study Area to defend the longstanding planning actions for the good of the Sacramento region. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Robert Burness, then Judith Lamar.
I'm Robert Burness. I'm representing another low chapter of the Sierra Club and Habitat 2020, a branch of Ecos. I was a Sacramento County Planner for 30 years, and part of my responsibility was developing the conservation element of the 1993 General Plan, as well as participating on the development of the urban service boundary for the Sacramento County. That plan went to the Planning Commission, and with input from speculative landowners in Natomas, changed our recommendation to limit growth in the ag-rich area of Natomas to include the entire northwest part of the county, to the river, to Sutter. This went to the Board of Supervisors, and Grantland Johnson was representing the area at the time. He was a pretty astute politician, and I'm almost certain that he would have checked with city electeds, Mayor Joe Cerna at the time, and maybe even some of the council members at the time, maybe even you, Mayor Steinberg. And he came back at the hearing on this matter with the board and basically said that development in the Natomas area should be the responsibility of the city council. And that was a wise recommendation, and it changed the board's approach and decision, and they adopted what is largely the urban service boundary today. We recognize that the study area for Natomas has been in the general plan for many years, and I'm running out of time, but I urge you to support-
For your comments, your time is complete. Our next speaker is Judith Lamar, then Jim Patchell.
Can I get my map?
Go ahead and get started, and then we can put it up.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'm Judith Lamar. 30 years ago, we founded the Friends of the Swainson Hawk because the city was opening up Natomas for development. North Natomas residents paid for the preserve that's there now. This is part of the city's legacy, and I'm so glad the staff has called out the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan and the conservancy as goals for the city to protect. For the benefit of the council, this basin is a regional basin. There's Sutter County permitted development. There's Sacramento City permitted development. There's development in Metro Air Park that was permitted in the county. And all of these areas of preserved, permanent mitigation land for species by SAFCA, by the airport, by the city, by Sutter County, are there permanently for wildlife. The key element of the plan, the balance, is the farmland that's not in preserve, not being developed. That farmland is absolutely critical to the conservation strategy, and that farmland is protected by the urban services boundary in the County of Sacramento and ag policies of the county. So we urge you to join in that effort, be proactive about protecting this area from any further development. These developments in purple together are bigger than the North Natomas Community Plan. This would absolutely destroy the mitigation land, the plan for protecting species and open space in Natomas. Other speakers will fill in the details. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Jim Patchell, then Dawn Whitney.
My name is Jim Patchell on behalf of Friends of the Swainson Hawk. 30 years ago, the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan was initiated. It is a contract between the city, Sutter County, Metro Air Park developers, and the state and federal wildlife agencies, which has resulted in so far in about 5,000 acres of habitat preserves in Natomas and thousands of acres of new development in the city. Total amount in the city permit area will be 8,000-something acres when it's completed. The habitat mitigation preserves are required to be in the basin to preserve populations of species which use the basin and are impacted by development. That is, we're not supposed to stick your mitigation preserves out in Yolo County. A key element of the strategy, conservation strategy, is remaining farmland in the basin, both for agriculture and open space, and particularly for the benefit of the protected wildlife, which is essential to continuation of the species in the basin. The HCP explicitly relies on the assumption that undeveloped farmland outside of the permit areas will remain in farmland, which provides benefits to wildlife and supplements the mitigation preserves. It is critical that the city oppose urbanization of farmland in Natomas outside of the existing urban permit areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dawn Whitney, then Kate Wilkins.
Good evening. I'm Dawn Whitney. I live in District 6. I'm here tonight asking the city council to prioritize the language in the CAP over the GPU as it goes forward, considering future development in open space or the creation of heat islands. I didn't know much about heat islands until last summer, but when I made the bad decision to walk onto my driveway barefoot in the heat of the day, and I've discovered that's not painful, it's excruciatingly painful. If you get up off of that, you probably have a second-degree burn. So I learned that concrete, that 105-degree sun on concrete gets it up to 120 degrees. Asphalt will heat up to between 140 and 180 degrees, spread out over an industrial area that's a heat island. Well, I can't do much about my driveway other than wear shoes, and I can't do much about the city streets or parking lots that are down, but I can watch development plans that might create more heat islands, or even worse, infringe on open space. The CAP is great. It addresses the dangers of heat islands, describes their impacts, and sets out some clear and distinct guidelines for going forward. Calls for more public space. It advises that 90% of new development be infill, and that's what the goal is like. The GPU is a different animal. It refers to an evaluation of feasibility that will take place until 2029. Those are good aspirations and standards and working patterns, but that's not a goal. It doesn't say what heat islands are going to look like or the dangers of building in open space. Money is involved in most things, but it becomes a mirage in climate issues because once a city is unlivable, nobody lives here, there's no more tax base. Again, please pay close attention to the CAP, keep, reduce heat islands, and stay out of open space building. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kate Wilkins, then Edith Thatcher.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Kate Wilkins. I'm here representing Sierra Club Sacramento Group today, though I've bothered you with 350 Sacramento many times before. I'm first going to echo the sentiment of many of the previous commenters. It's extremely important that the city commit to protecting open space, farmland and habitat area, as this is in line with the general plan and the goals of the CAP. The state legislature and Governor Newsom have adopted a 30-by-30 plan for California. This is part of a global campaign to protect 30% of land by 2030. In the greater Sacramento region, 7% of our land is protected. To meet the 30-by-30 goal here, an additional 900,000 acres must be conserved. If the county and the seven cities within it decided to conserve more easily accessible open space, like the land in Natomas for instance, we could easily bump that number up to 19% protected area, still under the 30-by-30 goal, but much better than 7% we have currently. And in a city that's known for its agriculture, food culture, proximity to open space, cherished by many for these open landscapes, making sure we conserve open space throughout the future is a no-brainer. Second, I want to touch on the cost of the CAP. For years, myself and other advocates have recommended the council begin discussions on how to pay for this multi-billion-dollar plan. We were told that those talks shouldn't begin until after the CAP was adopted, and while it looks like that time has finally come. I urge you to set up a committee or a working group or some quasi-formal body to begin analyzing potential funding options for the CAP. We need council to champion innovative funding strategies, much like Councilmember Valenzuela is doing with the Public Bank, which is a fabulous idea, to make climate focus revenue. This is an opportunity to be creative and let staff explore the many possibilities that other cities in the U.S. are working towards to raise funds for this absolutely critical work.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Edith Thatcher, then Jan Skolory.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. I'm Edith Thatcher, and I live in Natomas. This afternoon, I went out to collect my mail, and there I had a mailing from FEMA about my flood insurance. And I looked out over the houses, and I saw a Swainson's Hawk circling over the open space next to Paso Verde School. These two aspects are why the urban services boundary and the Natomas Basin Habitat Conservation Plan are so important. They protect us, the citizens of Natomas, and they protect the wildlife. Open space anywhere in the city is important to livability, and it is valued. Open space was number one in importance to the residents of the Valley Vision Livability Survey of 2023. From what we have heard here today, there are a number of community members who are concerned about protecting open space against random development outside of the USB in advance. I want to thank the councilmembers and the city staff for being clear about the city's intent to observe and protect the terms of the NBHCP. And thank you all for serving on the city council to represent all of us.
Thank you for your comments. Jan Skolory, then Michael Turgeon.
Bad handwriting, I guess. My name is Jan Schory, and I'm here tonight with my husband, Case Butterman, and I wanted to congratulate Councilmember Jennings, because I personally can testify to what a great guy this is to work with on any work activities, and also what a strong fellow you are in our community, so we all support you. Tonight, though, I'm here to talk about North Natomas, as many of the other speakers. My husband and I do reside in North Natomas in Westlake, directly across from the proposed Airport South Industrial Warehouse Project. We are here tonight because there appears to be a disconnect between the city's planning processes and the city's active pursuit of annexation of the huge Airport South Industrial Project. Tonight, you'll be approving a special study area for Natomas, which is intended to take into account all of the issues associated with possible urbanization. And yet, at the same time, city staff, without a vote of this council, has applied to LAVCO for annexation of the 450 acres of land next to Westlake, south of the airport, and your staff is actively engaged in the development of a draft EIR for the project annexation, which we have been told will be released shortly. I am a native Sacramentoan, and my husband and I have lived for more than 20 years in Natomas. Each Sacramento neighborhood, as I know and you all know, has something special and desirable about it, which is what makes Sacramento such a nice place for all of us to live. In Natomas, it's the wide-open spaces, the sunsets and sunrises, the agricultural fields and natural habitat, and the birds and animals. It's a wonderful place to take a walk outdoors. It's different than the other places in our county, and it's worthy of preservation for all of the people in our community. Now, I suspect that many Sacramentoans only know Natomas because of the route to the airport, driving by on I-5, or if you're an old Kings fan like me, you went to the Old Arena. Tonight, my request of you is that you visit Natomas and our Westlake residential community, the new school next to it-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Michael Turgeon. Daniel Patauski.
I'm a Sacramento resident in District 5, and I am here today to express my full and unencumbered support for the general plan, especially the transformative vision for housing. I am proud to live in a forward-thinking city that isn't stuck in the past or afraid of the future. I was born, raised in this town. I'm a graduate of the Sac State Public Policy Program. Sing yours up. And above all, I am a young person who wants to build a life here. I'm so excited to see the city embrace meaningful policies to craft an affordable, livable, sustainable home for all current and future Sacramentoans. I simply urge the council and staff to adopt this plan and move forward and keep the momentum going as we work to translate this vision into the tangible change that we all want to see. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Daniel Patauski, then Nick Avdis.
Can I have overhead, please? Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager, and City Clerk, Dan Puskowski. I'm an arborist who's lived and worked in Sacramento's urban forests for the last 33 years. I was Sacramento City Arborist from 1990-
Go turn your image over.
...to 2020. And the general plan does not, and the climate action plan does not make any reference to tree preservation. Now, we all know that trees are our first line of defense in combating climate change. Yet, more trees have been removed in Sacramento in the last 10 years than the prior 20 years. Now, why is that? There was a paradigm shift. When City Manager Ray Carriage gave direction to the city, he said, "I want sites shovel-ready, and I want to get the customers to success." Now, this is an example. This is a project in Wood Lake. These trees that I have the arrows to, they're off-site trees. Now, the developer got to remove all the trees on site. Now, they're raising the bar, and they're going for off-site trees. The thing that Urban Forestry is saying, that the code requires them to give the removal permit, it's the exact same code that I worked under for 15 years. I did all the projects, and the developers had to preserve trees. The other thing that's happening is planting sites are being replaced by utilities. That tree site is gone forever, and that's happening throughout the city. The other thing is, on your plan here, those trees are gone. They're gone forever. And what's happening is, the image you're getting is like we're a city of trees, and we're not anymore. We haven't been for a while. Please read the packet I gave you. It goes into detail about, but the action plan needs to take into account-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Nick, the Macworthy.
Mayor, City Council Members, Nick Avdis, with the Law Offices of Avdis and Coochie here this evening on behalf of Integral Communities and AKT Development, to comment specifically on General Plan Policy 412, which proposes a blanket ban on drive-throughs within a half-mile of transit. I appreciate the Planning Commission's recommendations and the resulting- I appreciate the Planning Commission's recommendations and the resulting amended policy language as it relates to North Natomas. Certainly, we're supportive of that change as it acknowledges the realities on the ground. Beyond what was recommended, Policy 412 continues to be a one-size-fits-all policy. It really doesn't have any flexibility, or allow consideration of particular facts and circumstances in a particular situation to consider. Doesn't rate TOD viability, does not have any metric for rating opportunity areas for TOD, and really treats them as equal across the city. We all know that's not necessarily the case. Now, not saying the policy is not well-intentioned, but I think it's misplaced. The existing Transit Oriented Development Ordinance that's on the books now currently in the county, city's Planning and Development Ordinance Code, does provide, I think, the flexibility and adequate safeguards to evaluate drive-through proposals that are located within that quarter-mile to half-mile distance from proposed or existing transit stops through the conditional use permit process. Specific to AKT Development, there is a site located at 7919 Folsom Boulevard. It's located at the corner of Cornet Drive and Folsom Boulevard. It's at the outer edge of the half-mile from the Power Inn Light Rail Station. Between the station platform and this particular property is a massive park-and-ride lot, a heavy rail line, intense traffic volumes at the intersection of Power Inn.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Mac Worthy, then Erica Butler.
Good afternoon, panel. How many of you remember the Ozon Hole? A hole in Ozon. People, I didn't grow up in this city. I grew up farming, from cotton farming to milk dairy. That's where I got my education. You pickering is something that you're not going to live to see. You can't control God's climate. Wake up. You can destroy man, but you can't destroy the universe. Wake up. You're going to spend millions and millions of dollars, and you're going to have the same shit you got housing. If you object here, you ask them some questions. Would a house with a 10-foot ceiling burn more fuel than a house with an 8-foot ceiling? They'll tell you the truth. Hell, yeah. Because they measure how many times that door opened when you've got eight people in that family. All the stuff you talk about, you ain't looking at the basics. Look at your houses with nails, toenail ends, stay together, you have two or four. The gun, that street in God, come along and blow that shit off with. Tornadoes, blow away. What about the old, old homes like my dad and them built, bricklayers, still standing? Every city in America, houses all the way to the front through the airport, isn't it? Think about it. Think about it. Who going to pay the cost? Y'all. I be gone, you going to try to pay the cost? What big companies coming into California? Nobody. The biggest employer here is healthcare. Think about it. Healthcare. Wow. Because COVID-19 was supposed to be overhones because of the older people like me. App to die from it. Happening that I survive. You got to be thankful for yourself first before you bullshit the others. So, wake up, people. Give the kids something to think about. All these professionals, all these organizations coming here, but how many people that left here say worried about it? Going to lower income housing to the climate change.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. I have 10 more speakers. The next is Erica Butler, then Ansel Lundberg.
Hello, I'm Erica Butler. I am a resident in the sphere of influence in South Sacramento. I'm not sure how that exactly, this plan affects my area, to be honest. It wasn't clear to me. But I do wish there could be some improvements, for example, camera. That actually might be kind of difficult to set up, because I got to scroll it, but, okay. Oh, okay. Got it. So, as you can see, I live near this area. There's this Bel Air at Calvine and Elk Grove Florin, Elk Grove Florin that I like to walk to. I usually come from this path that goes by this train area. I think this is it, right here. And then, I generally try to walk there. But the problem is, is that the sidewalk ends at different points on both sides of the road, and it's inevitable that I have to go in an area where the sidewalk ends, and you have cars going 45 miles an hour both ways. Now, I'm not sure how much the city council can do to address that, since it's only in a sphere of influence. But if that can be impacted, I think that would be helpful. In addition to that, I was hearing another comment about North Natomas. They were building a bridge, but it wouldn't be complete till 2039. That seems like a really long time. Is there maybe like a bureaucratic procedure that gets in the way of that, or something like that? So, are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. All right, so those are my main concerns. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your comments. Ansel Lundberg, then James Corless.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ansel Lundberg. I live in District 7, Curtis Park. I'm a homeowner. I'm on the Board of House Sacramento. We're the local YIMBY group, yes, in my backyard. We're here to support this plan. I think nearly five years ago, I sat at the Gardenland Community Center for the first public meeting of this plan, and here we are. Come a long way. It's a great plan. Thank you, staff, for all your hard work on this, and thank you, council, for doing what needs to be done to build more housing in Sacramento, put an end to our chronic housing shortage, and to make a serious dent in what our unhoused neighbors face in Sacramento, the lack of housing that we have here. So, I'm really excited about this plan. Our membership is super excited, and we'll be involved in the zoning code overhaul. Super exciting, but very important, that's going to come after this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. James Corless, then Louis Morante.
Mr. Steinberg, City Council. James Corless, Executive Director of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. I just want to hear, support the staff recommendation. I want to applaud your staff for a lot of hard work. As many of you know, we have a regional plan that we have to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from transportation by 19% in the next 11 years. The key to that is housing. The key to that is infill housing and affordable housing. That is our climate strategy, and your general plan recommendation tonight is a key part of that puzzle for holding on to our goals and achieving our goals, but also making sure we don't get cut off from state transportation and affordable housing funding, which is at risk if we don't do things like your general plan is doing. So, I want to congratulate your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Louis Morante, then Ryan Misano.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council Members. My name's Louis Morante. I'm a member of House Sacramento and a resident of District 4. I'm really excited about the housing piece today. I think my friend Ansel laid out our excitement really well. The only piece that I'll add as a point of personal pride is that nothing about the state's laws or federal laws is compelling Sacramento to do this. This is something we chose to do because it was the right thing to do, and I think that's something we should be very proud of as a community, that you should be very proud of as a council, and we should be very grateful towards staff for moving forward. So, urge your adoption of the housing piece, the general plan, and really excited for the zoning code update coming this year. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Ryan Misano, then Jonathan Cook.
I do not support this resolution. Climate change is another in a long line of hoaxes that are simply elaborate grass to gain more money and power for our invisible government. Ways to gain more money and power are crises like war. All Wars Are Bankers' Wars is a great book. Pandemics, climate change, and racism hoaxes, these are all used to terrify communities into submission. And there will never be peace until those in power, and you can't name the synagogue of Satan, or you'll be called an anti-Semite, have their complete one-world government. No government should ever be spending one penny on the climate change hoax. It's a gigantic shakedown scheme. The Bible tells us the love of money is the root of all evil. Qui bono is a Latin phrase that everyone should memorize. It means, "Follow the money." When you do, you find those who control the money also control the information with their control of the media, social media, schools, colleges, corporations, and much more, which all, surprise, ceaselessly trumpet climate change alarmism to deceive the naive and gullible. Who profits from climate change? Well, some speakers here tonight are simply looking to make more money. They don't want to know anything preventing their profit. According to University of Houston Professor Larry Bell, who stands to gain from the politics of corrupt climate science? There are many culprits, and they are becoming even more powerful. Principal among them are certain agenda-driven federal government regulatory agencies, alternative energy and environmental lobbies, a captive multi-billion-dollar-per-year climate science industry, cap-and-trade marketers, large associated special interest hedge fund managers, and, yes, the U.N. and other organizations seeking global resource and wealth redistribution. Let's not forget, the bankers were behind World War I, and they didn't get their League of Nations one-world government. So, the Treaty of Versailles created problems that virtually assured World War II, and before the end of World War II, the United Nations was put in force. No wise purchase to support any money given by government to climate change.
Jonathan Cook, then Rosie Yakub.
Good evening, Jonathan Cook. I'm the Executive Director with the Sacramento Housing Alliance. We're here in support of the 2040 General Plan Update. Thank you to Matt and Greta and the staff for creating such a meaningful process for this, and to listening to stakeholders. We really appreciate the revisions made to zoning, in particular to allow for denser zoning, I live in a sixplex in District 3, near apartment complexes, single-family homes, schools, parks, and we envision that for the rest of the city. Also appreciative of the focus on mixed-use infill and transit-oriented development that's going to be key to meeting our climate change goals. So, really appreciate that. Also, addressing the historic segregation through redlining that has existed in many cities across the country, so making sure that we're addressing that racial disparity and for low-income residents as well. And thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Rosie Yakub, then Stephen Rosen.
Hi, my name's Rosie Yakub. I am volunteer with 350 Sacramento, and I want to thank staff for their great work on the Climate Action Plan. And, yeah, but a couple of things on that. I was really disappointed, and I know it has to do with the legal challenge, to see that the existing building targets were walked back from the mayor's climate commission goals of 25% to 10%. It has to do with the Restaurant Association suing the city of Berkeley, and we do need a new path to move forward. However, I'd like to see the language, you know, it's a small ask. Instead of saying the target is 10% at 2030, just say at least, and do the same for 24, 2045, at least, because we know we need to do better. And there are already people on the ground looking at ways to create policies that will allow us to do better, and we should have faith in that. And then, the second thing I want to address is that it's a great plan, but plans require implementation. And implementation requires that we continue our level of staffing. We know that we're shy. One of the people who really forged us forward right here on the Climate Action Plan, that's Jennifer Venema. And we need to make sure that we fill her shoes and that we keep the staffing where it needs to be to actually implement the plan. And then, we need to do more. As Kate Wilkins mentioned, we need to fund this plan, find a creative way to move things forward, because, you know, it's a little time-critical. And so, creativity and energy is needed, and thanks to everyone so far for their work. And let's get started.
Thank you for your comments. I have three more speakers on this item. Stephen Rosen, Dinesh Dasgupta, then Kian Bliss.
Oh, good evening. I'm Steve Rosen. I'm one of the hundreds of thousands of people who live in Sacramento and participated in making this great plan that we can all support and hope that you adopt tonight. What I see is really great is that we have two big groups of people in here, people who want to see new, beautiful, walkable, livable and lovable neighborhoods that we want to live in and be able to afford to live in, and people who don't want to see sprawl into our wildlands, wilderness habitats, and so on. And those two things go great together. Build the first, and we don't need to do the second. So, congratulations on a great plan, and look forward to seeing you adopt it tonight. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Dinesh Dasgupta, then Kian Bliss. Dinesh? I'm not seeing any movement. Kian Bliss?
Yeah, just to, not too much to add, really emphasize, as a concerned community member, the need to really prioritize, well before 2040, improving our tree canopy. I've been noticing that, not just from the recent storms, but also just seems like, over the years, we tend to take down trees, you know, that may be dying, or in, or just fall over, or we just are just unsightly, and we're worried about, and not replacing those. And there's a lot of ways that we can do that, and I really am wanting to emphasize that we turn to our indigenous communities that are still here and have been cultivating this land for thousands of years, who understand how to really improve the natural scene and beauty of our city. So, I really want, really hope that we're, as this plan moves forward, that we are consulting them every step of the way, and that we're actually consulting all community members, not just those that have an economic interest to see, to keep the tagline of the city of trees, and property owners. But really, especially youth being involved in this, this is a conversation that needs to be ongoing, but we need to do it urgently. And we should have more workshops as a standing item here within that, not to mention around homelessness and making use of a lot of the empty buildings, which I know you all have talked about, but really want to see us think outside of the box and not just do what we've always been doing, or what we're comfortable with doing, but actually really rising to the need of this existential threat and emergency that we deal with, not just in climate change and all of the converging symptoms and crises that we're dealing with. So, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
All right. Thank you very much to the members of the public that came out tonight to testify. This gentleman, this is, he filled out a form on...
I don't believe he arrived before this item started.
Sir, um... Okay. I want you to read the warning again to the same person. It's the third time.
This is the third time we can...
I'd like you to ask her to leave, please. She must leave. You cannot shout out three times. You're out. Please read it.
Please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak out from the audience. You are in violation of Chapter 5 of the City Council Rules of Procedure. This is the third warning. Please leave the meeting.
I'm going to let him speak, so I'm not talking about him right now.
Please, please respect the speaker.
I'm going to, we're going to recess for 10 minutes, and I'm going to order that woman right there to leave.
And the gentleman next to him.
And the gentleman next to him to leave.
And the woman behind.
We're in recess. You're all out.
All right. We are now reconvened at 7:52 PM. Members of the public have continued to engage in conduct that have disturbed the orderly conduct of the meeting and are in violation of the Council Rules of Procedure, Chapter 5. Upon our return, we will only allow members of the media back into the chamber. Sergeant-at-Arms, please clear the chamber and only let members of media back into the media room.
Thank you very much. The City Council is back in session after recess. We've had a bit of a long recess, and I just want to make the following statement on behalf of my colleagues. These are the people's chambers, and everyone has a right to participate in their city governance. We must uphold the rules. As I said, people have a full right to participate, but when anyone deliberately and continually interrupts the meeting, that prevents others from participating. We will insist, as a unanimous City Council, on the public business being completed peacefully and without disruption. And so, we are back after recess, and let us complete the public's business. We were in the midst of the debate, Ms. Sandlin, on the general plan and climate adaptation. I'd like to take a motion on that, because we heard fully from everybody. Okay, I think you had, go ahead.
I'll open and close the public hearing and do approval of the...
I'll open and close the public hearing and move approval of the Climate --
Is that okay? Okay. Okay. Very good. That is fine. There's, well, again, I think as the mayor, if you don't mind, I just want to speak because I do think, I want to thank the staff, and I want to say this is a historic document, and will be seen in that way. Some of what we are doing is first in the nation, allowing, for example, or eliminating the caps on the number of units that can be built in a single-family zone. This is the most pro-housing city in the state, if not the country. And I think this document helps further that. And so, I want to say thank you, not just to the staff for doing an exemplary job, but to my colleagues here, because this represents the true progressive values, I think, of this community. Housing for everyone. We have a long way to go, but this document is going to serve the city well and all of its people for decades to come. All right? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Greg. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to reiterate, Council Vice Mayor Maple opened and closed the public.
Yes.
And Councilmember Kaplan seconded. You had a unanimous vote.
Yes. All right. We now have Item 23, which is one of our remaining labor agreements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Laney Millstein, Assistant City Manager. You have before you the WCE successor contract. Recommend approval as published by the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the item as published by the city clerk.
Okay. Any, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain. That passes unanimously. Item 24, this is not, this is the very beginning of the budget process. It's simply a report and an action to carry over the end-year balance to next year, so it doesn't require a lot of debate tonight. There will be plenty of debate and continued public input as the weeks proceed. Laney?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Laney Millstein, Assistant City Manager. I'd like to recommend to the public, if you want to see presentation of this item, to review the budget and audit video from earlier this morning. Staff is recommending adoption of a resolution as outlined in the published report.
Mr. Mayor, we had a robust conversation during Budget Audit Committee and a strong presentation. This allows us to move 7.4 million out of the mid-year budget. I'll move approval of the item.
Moved and seconded. Councilmember Vang?
Yeah, Mayor. I'll just keep my comments short. I just wanted to say, I know there's going to be some tough decisions ahead, but I know that this mayor and council will be able to manage the challenges that we have together. I just wanted to remind folks that we do have three town halls specifically for this, because I know we're not going to have time to talk about it tonight, but just really wanted to center those three town halls and encouraging folks to come out to that. It's on our social media. It's on the city's social media as well. I know one's in Natomas, one's in Central, and then one is in South Sacramento in Medaview on the 13th. And so, just encouraging folks to come out to that. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Members, if there's nothing else to come before the city council tonight, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene on the 12th of March. Thank you.